Where'd you get that from? Is there a spot nearby for that?
This is right in front of my office.
Oh, yeah. No, no, no. Ready? Okay. Good afternoon. I am going to call the meeting of the Homelessness and Housing Committee to order Tuesday, June 24th at 12:16 PM. Diego, please call the roll.
Brian? What do you?
Here.
Zimmerman? Dunphy?
Here.
Avalos?
Present.
All right. And then Ashley, please read the Statement of Conduct for Council Committee Meetings.
Welcome to the meeting of the Homelessness and Housing Committee. To testify for this committee in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance in the committee agenda at wwwportland.gov/council/agenda/homlessnessandhousingcommittee or by calling 311. Information on engaging with this committee can be found on this link. Registration for virtual testimony closes one hour prior meeting. In-person testifiers will sign up before the agenda item is heard. If public testimony will be taken on an item, individuals might testify for three minutes unless the chair states otherwise. Your microphone will be muted when the time is over. The chair preserves order destructive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or community deliberation will not be allowed. If you cause disruption, warning will be given. Further disruption will result in an ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, the committee might take a short recess or reconvene virtually. Your testimony shall address the matter being considered when testifying. State your name for the record. If your lobbyist identified the organization you represent, virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the clerk calls your name. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ashley. So today, we've got a bit of a switch up. And let me just start by acknowledging how frustrating it has been, I know, for our presenters today who are going to be sharing the North and Northeast Neighborhood Housing Strategy Report. And we had to delay a little bit, and we're hanging on to quorum with Councillor Dunphy. Unfortunately, we had just, folks had emergencies, and so we were almost going to lose quorum. So we're not going to do the second half of the meeting, which was to talk about the unified housing strategy objectives. I will push that to the next one. So we will just focus today on the report. And then we also, I'll just note, we are going to open it up for public testimony after we discuss it. And we're doing that because we're not taking any action on the report today. We're hearing it as a presentation, but we wanted to open it up for the public to provide comments since it's not going to the full council. So with that, Diego, can you read the first item?
North/Northeast Neighborhood Housing Strategy.
All right. So this item comes to us from the Portland Housing Bureau, and I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to staff to get us started. Come on up.
Kick it off, right? Yes. Pull up the slides. Okay.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Helmi Hiserik, Director of the Portland Housing Bureau. And I'm just going to read a few remarks, and then I will step back. The presentation that you will see today is the 10-year anniversary of the North-Northeast Housing Strategy, and it's a project that I take no credit for. All of the work that you will hear about took place before I came here. But I'm using my privilege as the Bureau Director to speak today because I want to share my perspective on this work. Before I came to Portland, I worked in the city of Los Angeles for 25 years, where, like Portland, communities of color were raised through eminent domain to make way for freeways and stadiums and hotels. After major transportation investments were made, rents and home prices skyrocketed from public investment while pushing out low-income apartment dwellers. Very often, books were written about the loss of historic communities of color with pictures of once vibrant neighborhoods, and very often, people pledged to do better in the future. But over the course of 25 years, I never saw a system focused on bringing people back to a community after they were displaced, until I arrived in Portland. That is why I'm particularly impressed by the work of the North-Northeast Housing Strategy. The effort to restore the opportunity for displaced community members to return to North-Northeast Portland is very significant. It is not a pledge to do better. It is an action. It is not lip service to an idea. It has been a steady commitment over a long period of time to direct human resources and financial resources and community to a North-Northeast Portland so that families who lost their foothold can come back and thrive, so that Black homeowners who lost generational wealth can return and be part of the community that gentrified them out. Importantly, this work has been led by people of color who come from the community. And though many people have been involved, including elected leaders in Portland, researchers, public agencies such as Prosper Portland, and many, many community organizations, there are a few people I would like to acknowledge today. First, I want to express my appreciation for Leslie Goodlow, who is the Executive Manager of Operations and Equity at the Portland Housing Bureau. She has been a steady guiding hand from the city who has maintained the focus of our team at the Portland Housing Bureau on the North-Northeast Housing Strategy. And just as an aside, on my very first day as Director, she plopped it in front of me and a week later said, "Have you read it?" She is a public servant in every sense of the word, who has committed to implementing this initiative since it started 10 years ago. And I want to acknowledge the hard work of the team at the Portland Housing Bureau who implement the homeownership programs, the repair programs, the multifamily finance and development programs, and the North-Northeast Preference Policy, and the admin team who show up every month at the Oversight Committee in North-Northeast Portland to create space for community dialogue and to report on the status of the work. And I want to express my gratitude for Dr. Stephen Holt, who has volunteered thousands of hours over the last decade as Chair of the North-Northeast Oversight Committee. He has managed a monthly meeting in full transparency and late nights discussing complex topics and having often difficult conversations. And also to the entire North-Northeast Oversight Committee, who has given their time and intelligence to this mission. Portland should take pride in the North-Northeast Housing Strategy. It has gotten some national recognition. It is truly a unique and profoundly important body of work that has few places with similar circumstances have figured out how to implement. I am working to draw lessons from the work that has preceded me here, and I feel privileged to be able to join the monthly meetings and hear the conversations taking place. It is a real example of the accomplishments that happen when people of color lead, and when leadership begins with love of Portland, love of community, and an unwavering belief that we can change the course of history. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Helmi, for opening that and your comments. I'm Dr. Stephen Holt, and I am the Chair of the Oversight Committee. And it's a privilege to be in the moment, and I feel like saying, we finally made it to this place. We've been at this now for, gosh, several months trying to get into this space. And as you identified, the meeting has been changed a few times, and now we're here. It is with kind of mixed emotion that I sit in front of us, having historically had the opportunity, because of the significance and breadth of this work, to meet with the entire council. Of course, that was prior to our new council and the shifts and changes that have happened. It was our hope that we'd be sitting in front of the full subcommittee to have this conversation because of the weight and the gravity of what we're talking about. I will briefly introduce and contextualize what we've done and why, for 10 years, I've committed myself to this work and the significance of keeping it a priority. You may or may not know, I'm a native to the city of Portland. My parents go back to Vanport, and were in the Vanport flood. My mother was in third grade when the Vanport flood happened. She then moved into Albina and lived in the Albina area when Emanuel was being built and was again displaced by Emanuel. My father was displaced by I-5. And I could go through the long and sordid history that we know of Portland and the number of times that Portlanders, Black Portlanders specifically, were removed from their places of dwelling, where businesses were housed, et cetera. In fact, Williams alone, from Killingsworth to Broadway, had 300 Black-owned businesses. Our family was one, the Rocket Station on Williams and Killingsworth, which is no longer. I could go through the history that brings us to the value of why this is so significant, the generations of families who lost the opportunity for legacy and longstanding wealth and the ability to put their children through college, through pooling and leveraging the equity in homes, et cetera, et cetera. We know. The purpose in heartbeat behind the North-Northeast Housing Strategy is to not only bring attention to the issue, but to create a pathway and a strategy to resolve some of the issue. Many times, what people do is complain and talk about and identify the need or the problems, but not always do they come up with solutions and strategies to address it. That's what this has done. This has come up with a strategy to begin a process of addressing it. By no means is it a panacea to solve all the problems, but it does create a pathway to address it. And I think a pathway that has garnered incredible success from a group of volunteers that have given themselves time and energy and effort to hold accountable what the city has said is of value and what nonprofit partners have attempted to provide. My concern today, and why my emotions are mixed, is because of the first thing I said, what the city has said is of value. For years, I have repeatedly used this phraseology, that we must make promises made, promises kept. Promises made, promises kept. It is true about the city of Portland, part of the articulation is that it's a city where everybody can live, but it's not. It's not a city where everybody can live, that the majority of Black families and Black individuals can't afford to live in the neighborhoods of the city of Portland. So we say one thing, and we're doing another. The emphasis and the importance of this kind of work, I don't think, can be overrated. And my mixed emotions is, and there are things we can't control, and I know that there are circumstances that have happened today when we came to this meeting, but to have been at this for the last six months, attempting to have a time to have dialogue, to interact about this, leaves me kind of in a bittersweet. I'm glad we're here. I wish it had been different. Lastly, I will say, what you're going to hear today, as Ms. Goodlow goes through the details, you're going to hear about what's been accomplished. You're going to hear about the incredible things that have been done. I will say now what I will say again. This is really a beginning. While we celebrate what's been accomplished, it is by no means the end of what needs to happen. This is a city where Black families can't afford to live. And I think that's something for us to think about. I will speak to more specifics and give an opportunity for my Oversight Committee members who are here to express, they'll have a few moments to do so. John Washington to my left, Akilai is to my right, appreciating their time here, and I don't know if Ms. Sheila's gotten on. And Gillian Siraj, thank you, Gillian, for making it. These people have given themselves to this work because of the high value, and I appreciate their voice and their investment. And so you see the list of the names, and I highlight and appreciate everyone who's been willing to, month after month, week after week, year to year, give themselves to advance this work. So Ms. Goodlow, if you'll begin to walk us through the specifics of the report, and then we'll have some comments, and I'll bring my thoughts back together with where we are and where I think we should go.
Good afternoon. Leslie Goodlow, Equity and Business Operations for the Portland Housing Bureau and Project Manager for North-Northeast Housing Strategy. I just want to acknowledge our Oversight Committee. These community leaders are guiding accountability and ensuring the strategy remains community-rooted. They represent a wide cross-section of lived experience, professional expertise, and historic ties to the neighborhood. So in 2015, we made clear promises to prevent displacement, restore homeownership, and expand affordable housing. In 2025, we're proud to show significant impact and measurable outcomes while also naming the work that remains. First off, so far, since the inception, we've invested over $130 million of TIF, Tax Increment Financing, CET, Construction Exercise Tax, Short-Term Rental Fees, and Metro Bond Funds directly into strategies tied to displacement prevention, homeownership, and rental housing, with even more leverage through partnerships. Here is a map of the investments that have been made into the North-Northeast Housing Strategy. The blue circles are open rental. The square, the blue squares are rental in the pipeline. The yellow or orange, or I'm not sure what color it is on your screen, are open homeownership. And then the square orange is homeownership in the pipeline. The first goal of the strategy is preventing displacement. Over $12 million has gone toward home repair and stabilization efforts for longtime residents, critical in keeping people housed and in their communities. Almost 1,300 families have been assisted with critical home repairs. PHB provides both home repair grants and loans, and the loans are forgivable after 15 years. Grants are managed through contracts with our community partners. And this is a quote from one person who we recently assisted. "In November of 2024, everything died on me. I had just retired and was receiving disability assistance when the furnace stopped working. I had no heat or hot water, and was so cold, I started wearing all my clothes to stay warm. My space heater was dying on me, and eventually it caused an electrical fire. My doctor helped me get into a hotel, and shortly thereafter, I developed kidney failure. With the house needing so many repairs, I wasn't sure I would be able to live in my home again, a home my father built in 1968 after being pushed out of Albina with eminent domain. The folks at PHB and the Portland Water Bureau were like Superman. They came to the rescue." Sorry. Connecting me with so many nonprofit agencies, I am so grateful. And this is what we did for her. She got a new kitchen, flooring and wall finished by PHB Home Repair, cabinetry by Rebuilding Together, new flooring. The carpet was from 1970s. A new water heater from Community Energy Project, a new furnace from Verde. New garage floor, new paint throughout the home from Rebuilding Together, new garage doors from PHB Home Repair, a new roof from PHB Home Repair, new electrical panel and service from PHB Healthy Homes Production, insulation from Community Energy Project, and interior doors and knobs from PHB Home Repair. The next strategy is creating new homeowners. Over $13.8 million in tax increment financing has been invested to support new homeowners, primarily Black Portlanders with historic ties to North and Northeast Portland. These investments have funded down payment assistance and affordable housing development. The down payment assistance amount has increased three times since the launch of the Housing Strategy, initially set at $60,000 per household. That was based on housing prices in 2015. The current assistance within the Interstate Urban Renewal Area is $150,000, which reflects the impact of rising home prices and interest rates. Down payment assistance loans are structured as no-interest, no-payment loans, with up to 20% of the loan being used for home improvements, and that portion is considered a grant. Loan forgiveness begins in year 15, with 50% forgiven, followed by 3% forgiven each year thereafter until year 30, when any remaining balance is fully forgiven. Through a partnership with Prosper Portland, which provides supports for families earning 80% to 120% of AMI, we have helped 16 households achieve homeownership. These homeowners are a direct result of the restorative intent of the North-Northeast Preference Policy. Each home purchase represents a family reconnecting with the community, reclaiming stability, and creating opportunities for generational wealth. This slide illustrates the funding sources that have supported these preference policy homebuyers, showcasing the layered investments made possible through TIF and other resources. This is a map of the preference policy families and where they have purchased homes, highlighting the geographic spread and community impact of the policy. We, the CET and STR funds are able to be used citywide, and the TIF, as you know, is only able to be used within the district. So we were able to assist folks in purchasing outside the URA because we felt that being a homeowner was the most important thing, and being in the district was the second most important. The next strategy, creating rental homes. Rental housing represents the largest area of investment under the North-Northeast Housing Strategy, with nearly $95 million allocated and more than $300 million leveraged through public and private partnerships. This investment has supported the development of 11 buildings, delivering a total of 877 affordable rental homes. Of those, 739 units are subject to the Preference Policy, prioritizing applicants with historic ties to the neighborhood. Units excluded from the policy include permanent supportive housing, project-based Section 8, and onsite manager units, which have separate regulatory and leasing requirements. This is a list of all of the buildings and the number of units and how much was invested in each, how much PHB investment was, and then the leveraged dollars for each building. Strategy four, land acquisition. Land acquisition, we have invested over $12 million, which ensures long-term development capacity and preserves future opportunities in areas where market pressures are strongest. We have started construction on the two additional properties, and Dr. Daryl Milner is currently open, so that was the first property that we purchased. The North-Northeast Preference Policy is designed to give priority to families with historic ties to North and Northeast Portland. Applicants may receive up to three points for their own displacement history and an additional three points for a parent, grandparent, or legal guardian. Households whose family homes were taken through city action or eminent domain receive the highest level of priority. In 2024, more than 1,000 individuals applied to join the homeownership waitlist. Of those, 411 successfully verified their preference points, bringing the total number of verified homeownership applicants to 850 since the policy's inception in 2015. The rental application remains continuously open, with over 7,000 individuals having applied for preference points to date. In 2024 alone, 2,230 In 2024 alone, 2,213 individuals submitted rental applications. Despite significant investment, affordability remains a critical challenge for many families, particularly Black families. A two-bedroom unit remains financially out of reach. The chart on the left compares the median income of a three-person African-American household with the 60% and 100% area median income benchmarks. So the blue at the top is the 100%, the orange at the bottom is the median income for a Black family of three, and then the 60% is the gray, and so Black families are falling below a 60% income. The chart on the right illustrates the rent burden faced by African-American families even when renting a two-bedroom unit priced at 60% AMI, demonstrating how deeply unaffordable housing remains for many. Slide 18, drawn from PHB's 2024 State of Housing in Portland Report, shows that Black families have only one neighborhood in outer southeast where a two-bedroom unit is considered affordable. This underscores the need to align our policies with current income and market realities to ensure equitable housing access. Our newsletter revived in 2021 reaches over 12,000 people per quarter. It features homebuyer stories, partner highlights, and development updates. PHB staff also participate in community events and host info sessions year-round. The next few slides detail critical shifts in how PHB supports families through expanded renter protections, home repair outside the URAs, asset preservation, and increased MWESB and workforce participation. He highlights to emphasize, PHB now applies citywide approaches to displacement prevention. The Renter Services Office has supported thousands through eviction prevention and legal assistance. Ban the Box and the Fair Ordinance have improved screening equity, and Security Deposit Pilot supports renter transitions into preference policy units. Economic and structural supports, land ownership, economic opportunity, and tax policies have all been reconsidered in service of equitable access and neighborhood retention. We continue pushing for policy flexibility and systemic change. And now I'll pass it over to John Washington for his comments.
Hi, good afternoon, Council. Well, you know, that was a surprise, Leslie. Thank you very much. You woke me up. You know, I really do have a real special place in my heart for this committee. You know, the Northeast Oversight Committee plays a critical role to ensure accountability, and I think that, for me, that's really important in this process, not just in access to housing, but in the quality of life, those moving into affordable housing. This committee helps hold builders and property managers to a higher standard. And I think that that's really critical when you can see the momentum and the growth over a period of time. Second, there is nothing more powerful than watching someone who has struggled finally achieve the American dream. And I use the word "struggle." It more than, it's more than just a roof, it's a life-changing milestone that ripples into generational wealth and lasting economic impact. And third, but we must also ask ourselves, is the American dream dead? Fifty years ago, we believed in a future where we could own homes, run businesses, and pass something on to our children. Today, the dream feels like it's out of reach for far too many. We're not doing enough, as stewards of this community, to restore homeownership as a priority. We hear excuses about construction costs, material shortages, but the truth is, homeownership is still happening for those who are fully, who have full access to resources. It is our responsibility to rebalance the dynamic through courageous legislation and real leadership. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John. We're attempting to get another committee member on to share. While we're doing that, Aquiles.
Thank you very much, Aquiles Montas. I'm a 41-year North Portland resident, and been so proud to have been part of this committee, continue to protect our neighborhoods. As I see more of the displacement, it's still happening, so we're trying definitely to try to protect that, especially with this high cost of property rents or housing. So definitely extremely, extremely proud of this committee and being part of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And then Ms. Jillian Siraj.
Hello, my name is Jillian Siraj Felton. I work in affordable housing as a developer. I'm the Housing Director for an organization called Community Partners for Affordable Housing, and I've been on this committee longer than I've had that job or title. I've been doing this work for 10 years. This work is incredibly moving. I think the story that Leslie told of someone that was helped by these policies is incredibly moving and urgent and critical. And I just want to express, I think Dr. Holt expressed earlier, a level of disappointment and lack of engagement with the new city council with this committee. This work is important at a time where it couldn't be more important. If we are truly a liberal progressive city, then we are progressive for everybody, not just people who look like me. To not show up to any of our committee meetings so far since the new city council has been elected, to not have full attendance here in this meeting, it is a little heart-wrenching. This work may seem like a drop in the bucket to right the wrongs of the past, but those wrongs were based on a system of white supremacy, and we cannot move forward into a future of equality if we do not address the sins of our past. The North Northeast Housing Strategy has been used as a model in other cities. We are the prototype. We created this model, and other cities have used this strategy in order to help Black folks in their cities also gain access to affordable housing, affordable homeownership, and to return to neighborhoods that they were pushed out of. All of these policies work because of the system of white supremacy that was in place, because of redlining. We have a history of Black folks living in a certain neighborhood, and then because of progressive and intentional displacement, we have folks who want to move back there. It is critical work at a critical time, and I cannot encourage enough for more engagement from the city council and from this committee with this work. It is not, it is not unimportant, it is transformative, it is progressive, it is the values that we profess to have. This committee is doing that work, and it's, I think it's time, you know, it's time that we really show up for the people we say we're going to show up for.
Thank you, Jillian.
Thank you. Let me pause you one quick second, Diego.
I apologize for the interruption, Chair Avalos, as well as to our presenters. I just needed to make a quick note for those that are listening online to the YouTube stream. I recommend, you're going to see in a moment, that we will be ending a duplicate stream because there's two running at once. So I recommend navigating to today's Homelessness and Housing Committee Agenda page. Once the stream is down, you'll be able to refresh the page, and you'll be able to click on the link towards the top of the page, and you will be updated to the current YouTube stream. Thank you.
Thank you, Diego. Please continue.
Oh yeah, thank you very much. We are trying to get Sheila, Ms. Sheila Holden, on LinkedIn to our meeting. Jillian, you almost took the words out of my mouth, because I was going to wrap up my thoughts in regard to, before I talk about our recommendations, in regard to the noise around this committee. That the work that's been accomplished, not that we're looking for any kind of celebration, but we are looking for the support, that then, and investment, that continues to cause this work to go forward. We have been in a position of being a voice and advocate for those who don't have voices and those who haven't had advocates, to take advantage of opportunities or even know that opportunities exist, to help support and create pathways to homeownership or safe places of dwelling. That's not a civil right, that's a human right, that everyone should have an opportunity to be safe and taken care of and invested in. And as stated, not to continue to beat the same drum, but as stated, the absence of engagement or interaction with current leadership has been loud and concerning. I will conclude that the history of the work must not have been known, that somehow in transition of communication, there wasn't the continuation of the work that this committee has done. When we initially launched, it was under the leadership of Mayor Charlie Hills, and we talked about a variety of investments that are of significant concern for support, that if we're going to create homeownership, and if we're going to create rentals, then we also need to do something that creates a pathway for economic improvement and economic development. There has to be an on-ramp, the two go hand in hand, and then we must look at our educational system. We had great dialogue about that, but you know, leadership changes, and when leadership changes, stories don't always continue, and priorities don't always continue. Which brings us to this current moment. There's a current phraseology that I'm hearing a lot of, and that is, when you know better, you do better. And so now that we know better, the expectation is that we can do better. It brings me to my recommendations before Ms. Sheila gets in. You heard that there is one neighborhood where Blacks can live, Black families. Our current approach of our AMI determinations, we have to look at 30%, 60%, I think 80% AMI support. When the majority of families are rent burdened at 60%, we have no 50% option or 40% options. Oh, Sheila is in?
Yes, she was in.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. Well, I will defer. Ms. Sheila, we're glad you're here.
Thank you, Councilmembers, Committee Members, and general public. My name is Sheila Holden. I am glad to finally get on board. One of the things I wanted to talk about is the history. We all know some aspects of the history, but you often hear Dr. Holt talk about promises made, promises kept. And one of the things that happened in the 80s was, we saw what was happening with redlining, with abandoned housing, and no ability for people to buy into the area. And then on the heels of that, we had the crime issues and the gangs and what have you, and the community was fed up. It finally decided that we all had to work together, so we were able to get small business, large business, neighborhood association, nonprofit organizations, the city, the county, and the state to all come together to help us to develop a northeast strategy. That organization became the Northeast Economic Development Alliance. And out of that, we formed a blueprint that included the typical kind of thing, which was land use and transportation, but also family services, education, jobs and job training, housing. All of these were critical in economic development, both for community development and for small business development. And all of these became aspect of a strategy for the area. It was powerful enough for the city to take on actually putting a albina vision in place, and the Albina Community Plan became a part of that. And the blueprint were those things that that alliance of community, business, nonprofit had developed that tended to address all of the issues that are important for a strong and vibrant community, that had quality of life and opportunities for personal and family wealth generation. We put together the plan, and then a few years later, we had the opportunity to actually look at where we could get the funding for doing it. It was on the heels of the north-south light rail, and they were looking at, where do we put the light rail? And we said, if you're looking to put it in through our neighborhoods, we don't want it to happen the way it did before. We don't want the ultimate domain to be an issue, nor do we want to have displacement. So one of the commitments that were made to us, to the community as a whole, was that there would be assurance, and have it inculcated into the plan, that all those issues were going to be addressed, and that we would protect those people who were in the community. We were able to build the light rail, you can see it and probably ride it every day. But we still had not gotten enough funding available to the issues that we had raised. And so the next thing that came along, just when the funds in the urban renewal zone got high enough that we could really start addressing some of those issues, the interest in HOPE 6 came along, which they wanted to address Columbia Villa because of all the issues out there, and saw an opportunity, partnering with the federal government, to redevelop that area. So we agreed to allow $30 million to come out of our fund so that that area could be developed, with the understanding that we were going to get the next funds, that we would benefit from that money going out there, in terms of being able to produce jobs and employment for the people in the area. We then found out, we had a housing strategy that all of a sudden went away from just being, addressing the folks in North Northeast, but addressing housing in general and homelessness in general. And so we got caught up in the mix, or lost in the mix. We developed a program that said, with the gentrification that's starting to occur, with the predatory lending that is happening, we need to have a way to protect our people in our community. And so we wanted to put together something that could work for us, that was something folks could trust and feel comfortable with, and we came up with a housing strategy around retention of our customers, or I should say, our community. The individuals who owned homes, at one time, we had one of the highest percentages of homeownership in a Black community around the nation. And so we wanted to get back there. And the thing that we wanted to see done was home retention, home repair, and educating people around how they could stay in their homes, especially if there were seniors who had younger folks in the home, who may have set it up so that they would have to do, pay for their taxes by deferral, and then when they passed, the folks who were still at the home didn't have a way to finance that or didn't even know how to do it. The thing that I've been impressed with is that, with all that has happened in the last 10 years, all those things that we had said we were going to do, we're seeing that the evidence of it on the streets in our community. Finally, people are coming back into the community, people have options for housing. They can have homeownership, they can actually come into the area with affordable rental properties. We want to see this continue. We've delayed it, we finally are getting in the mix of being able to see the results of the effort, with real dreams being fulfilled. And homeowners who are actually starting to be able to have a legacy in that they are building up equity in the properties that they have. So I think the thing that I want us to understand, for our new Councilmembers, this is not a new thing, and it is not a done thing. It is a, it is something that was promised to the community, and we finally got the mechanisms in place to make it happen, and we need your continued to support to make sure it happens this time around.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate it. I will identify my recommendations, make a few comments. I will identify my recommendations, make a few comments around them, give us opportunity to interact, if there is desire for that. First recommendation is to, of course, adjust affordable targets to reflect economic realities. I was talking about that a moment ago, 60%, 30%, we must have some 40%, 50% opportunities for rental, as well as homeownership opportunities. It is unfortunate that when you look at the area median income for black families, it is 50% of that of the privileged majority. It is unfortunate, it says a lot about where we are. Another recommendation then is to increase black trades and construction participation. As it relates to this particular work, this is one of the areas that we have an opportunity to do economic strategy, where we can get involved in economic development by helping to lower the barrier and create pathways to help African-American business owners get into the trades, or get into the spaces where they can take advantage of the dollars that are being allocated. One of the incentives that is associated with the allocation of dollars is that they're doing it with certified companies. Well, I own a certified company, and I know the barrier, the standards that, and the hoops you have to hop through in order to get certified. And it isn't simple for small business owners, the insurance standards, et cetera, et cetera. Some are just absolutely ridiculous, have nothing to do with, with the work that is being done. We've got to lower the bar or find ways to increase access that will help people generate revenue, which then can help folks secure their housing. Another recommendation is to leverage housing choice vouchers with Home Forward. The Housing Choice Voucher Program has been accessed whereby people, instead of just getting the dollars that are covering their rent, can turn that to mortgage coverage. Why not leverage that and make sure that we're doing all we can to help individuals get into spaces where they're buying and not just renting? You don't build wealth by renting. You can have security and consistency, which is extremely important, housing stability, but we really would like to see people leverage and build wealth. So that's a recommendation. Recommendation number four, maintain long-term support for the preference policy. This policy has not only gained national attention, it's gained international attention. There is nothing like it in the nation. There's been no other policy that has been established that has created a pathway to bring families into communities where they once lived, that is associated with geography as opposed to, as opposed to ethnicity. This creates a way, or has created a way, to be supported by HUD. In fact, it is on HUD's, HUD's website, at least it used to be. Their equity website, as a reference to an equitable way of building community. That came out of Portland, that came out of this committee. I think we should make noise about that. We need to strengthen the home retention tools. We talked about that, Ms. Sheila just talked about that. It is important. Those who currently own in our house, we'd like them to be secure and to continue in that space, and that means more work. That might mean a variety of ways of telling the story, so that families who can benefit are able to access that. We need to, another recommendation is expand homeownership resources amid market challenges. Our current district affordability continues to just, I don't even know the words, explode. It's ridiculous, the pricing. I never thought that I would see a million dollar home on Williams and Fremont. I never thought we would see those kinds of prices. If we're going to help people own homes, we can't stay localized in one district, we have to look at citywide opportunities. Another recommendation is to respond to the PSU report findings with accountability and action. I won't go through all of those findings, but there are some very specific areas that should be considered. It's in the report, you can dig into it, it is, we want to make sure that the people who are moving back are benefiting from the privilege of being back. We want folks to be in safe communities, safe neighborhoods, safe spaces, as well as embraced in community. One of the things I talked about with Mayor Hills, and also talked about with Mayor Wheeler, and I don't know how we would go about it, but what a, what a great opportunity to begin to have some sense of collaborative engagement with the market rate places, as well as the affordable places, around a sense of community development. We don't have much, I would say, that creates spaces where, where there's interaction and dialogue and relationship development. And what I'm referring to specifically are people who are coming into, or living in affordable houses or affordable rentals, and now going to some of the marketplace and market spaces and treat it in ways that continue to create bias and discomfort. It would be wonderful to do something around establishing a sense of community and continuity, not necessarily in our scope, but certainly of value. Last recommendation is to explore expansion of the strategy for other risk communities. We are not the only one. The truth of it, though, is we're at the bottom, and that's what makes it most unfortunate. Tony Hobson, the director of SEI, at the 10-year celebration, said words like these. It's not a specific quote, but in essence, he communicated this. The work that's been done is great, the investment is tremendous, but we need more of it, we need more of it. It's been 10 years, we need another 10 years, and then another 10 years after that. I will conclude my comments by saying this. I think I'm a fun guy. I think I'm a fun guy, I think I'm a jovial guy, I think I'm a guy that not only cares about the community, but pretty easy to get along with. It's unfortunate that our introduction is in this moment. So, this is not personal to you, this is not an affront or an attack to you. I am passionate about our city, and I'm passionate about the people who look like me, who live in this city. Not just because of my lived experience, not even just because of my family's lived experience. As you've heard the data, and you've heard the report, and you've heard the information, we have a problem. Portland has a problem, and someone needs to be courageous enough to unapologetically articulate it, bring attention to it, and work at a strategy to solve it. At some point, the promises that have been made need to be the promises that are kept. Thank you for some time.
Thank you so very much. I'm, I'm also feeling emotional and the mixed emotions, because I also regret that this is the way that we have to meet, and that all of the circumstances that led to, you know, this report coming to the committee, I much would have preferred that it come to council. In fact, we invited all of the counselors to attend at a minimum, to listen to the report and absorb what the report is really saying about how we need to be leading as a city in this dire moment. You absolutely have been on my radar, in fact, I fought hard to get $500,000 in the budget to go towards the North and Northeast Preference Policy Preservation of Housing. I was pretty disappointed that my colleagues, after a lot of, you know, remarks during the Albina settlement, couldn't come around to support those critical dollars for black families. So, I share your frustration in seeing lots of promises get made to the black community that aren't kept. But I am here to assure you that I'm here to make sure that they are kept, I am here to, obviously, I'm a leader and I'm responsible for being accountable to what you are saying, and I am your partner in this, and I will assure going forward that we will strengthen this partnership. I'm incredibly committed to the work that you all are doing, because as you say, this is, this is about the entire city, it's not just about the black community. If we can rise up the black community, we will rise the rest of the city, but it's unacceptable that we continue to let our black Portlanders falter at the bottom. And it's unacceptable to me, I believe it's unacceptable to this committee, and we are, I think, committed to ensuring that we continue these discussions. So, thank you for, for your words, you know, your, your emotions are felt and they're real and they're acknowledged, and I just want to assure you that we're going to do better moving forward, as you said. Now that we know better, we're going to do better.
Thank you.
Let me have Councilor Murillo add some thoughts, and then we'll continue chatting.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much for presenting today. I think that this was information that I did need to have, and I'm very grateful that you're here today. I also would have much rather had this at the full council. So, I think as we're, you know, having these discussions and working out our new government system, we need to make sure that we're really intentional with people who have done this work for a long time that are going to lead us, so I just want to acknowledge that. And Dr. Holt, I really appreciate you, you know, putting your heart on the table in these spaces. We don't always do that, and this work is personal when we're breaking generational curses and everything that has come before us. I'm Paraguayan, so my struggle is not the same as yours, but I feel that our struggles are parallel in many ways and that we need to stand in solidarity together, so I'm very grateful for all of you being here. And I will make sure that all of my colleagues watch this committee meeting, I will bug them every day for the next few weeks if they don't. And I made sure that my constituent services person also reached out, I think we got your contact information, so that we can set up a meeting. I would be happy to attend a committee and learn more about this and where we can support. I really appreciate you guys laying out a plan for us for the things that you need from us, and I know for a fact that Councilor Avalos and me, and I know Councilor Dunphy is online watching as well, are very committed to this, so I appreciate you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Dunphy.
Thank you. First, I want to apologize to everybody for not being there in person, I'm currently calling you from beautiful Milwaukee, Wisconsin, but this was important and I'm glad to be here. Second, I also want to apologize for not having been able to attend a North-Northeast Housing Committee meeting yet. The first six months in this job have been the most overwhelming six months of my life, but that's no excuse, and I hope to attend one soon, this is absolutely important. Third, I will, I will note, I agree, Dr. Holt, you are a fun guy, as is Mr. Washington and Mr. Montez, I happen, the pleasure of knowing all three of you and the other folks I haven't had a chance to meet yet, but more than being fun, I'm just so deeply thankful for your commitment and your long-term commitment to these, to our community, to our shared vision for what this city could look like. All of the recommendations you made felt exceptionally reasonable and within grasp, and so I'm eager to try and see that we can, we can exercise those recommendations into policy. I'll note, I also supported Commissioner, or Councilor Avalos's amendment, and I'm disappointed it did not pass, we will find another way to be able to continue this work. And last, I will ask a question, and I guess it's maybe more of a philosophical question, but like Dr. Holt, I, you know, I grew up in Northeast Portland, I would never thought I would see a million dollar piece of property on North Williams. And it makes me wonder, you know, the, the historic challenge of the Albina District, trying to get folks to come home is such an enormous task when faced against the real estate market. And the real estate market is absolutely, like, disconnected from reality. I'm wondering, is there, is there a guiding philosophy for the North-Northeast housing strategy around being intentional about, I guess what Leslie was saying, you know, trying to find some of those opportunities for homeownership when the geography wasn't there? You know, I'm thinking specifically, that one neighborhood in Portland where black families can afford to live is in District 1, and we are continuing to be the only place where there is any level of affordable housing. So is there need for a broadening of the mission of this, or do you think that continuing to primarily preference both, preference the Albina, the historic Albina District is the right direction for the next 10 years?
I appreciate that. I see that Ms. Leslie wants to, Ms. Goodlow is eager to respond, and I'm going to give her the opportunity to do so first, but I certainly have two specific things that I think will offer some strategy around that.
Thanks for the question, Counselor. I, I think as we are developing the action plans for the new TIP districts, and we know where BIPOC folks are living, that we need to consider whether we create a preference for people to not be displaced out of those neighborhoods. How do we ensure that as we're putting in infrastructure on 80th Circuit and Division and, and Park Roads, that people don't end up being displaced farther east, or farther south, or over the river to Vancouver? There have been questions about how do we utilize the preference policy in, in the new TIP districts? The funding that we have currently, you know, is restricted to, of course, to Interstate URA, and those funds are just about all committed. We have three projects that are in some stage of development, and we still have some money left for homeownership in the district. But once those funds are done, then in order for this to continue, we have to have another funding stream for Northeast Portland, or we look at how do we ensure that people that are living in that one affordable neighborhood, can they buy there? How do we, how do we help them to become homeowners in, in those new districts? And I'm working with the Cully team, tomorrow, we're going to be working on the housing portion of the action plan, and one of the questions that came up there was, can we do a preference policy to, for folks from Cully to not get displaced? So, I think that there are ways to look at this as a, as a stepping stone for other, other districts and other areas of town to keep poor people and brown people from getting the short end of the stick.
And then to my left, Ms. Gillian has a response.
A dynamic duo.
Yeah.
So I just, I just wanted to add, one of the reasons that, or the reason that the preference policy works is because it's not, it's based on place, and place is not a protected class. So, the reason that this particular policy has impacted, has positively impacted black families is because these are the neighborhoods where historically, black families have lived and that they were displaced from. The number one way to fight displacement is to prevent it in the first place. It is far harder to get somebody to move back in to a neighborhood that's been gentrified than to help them not leave that neighborhood. And so, one of the recommendations in, in our report, and that Dr. Holt talked about, is extending this preference policy to other URAs, to other urban renewal areas. We have several new ones that have been developed around the city, and to really use this prototype and apply it to those areas, it doesn't necessarily, because it's place-based, have to be people who have already been displaced. You could prioritize people who live in that neighborhood. So the Cully URA funds could have a place-based preference for people who used to or currently live in Cully. So that, I think, is, is just some color on, as from an affordable housing perspective, you know, how we are staying within the bounds of fair housing law, and also impacting the folks that we want to have the impact. So, yes, and you can look at the map that Leslie had up earlier of where those homeownership opportunities have been, and they're not all in North-Northeast, but they started with that North-Northeast Preference Policy, that's where the homeownership education came in, that's where the connection with other down payment assistance came in, but the, the way into that system is through where they lived historically, and not necessarily. And so, does that make sense, what I'm saying, like, the, the impact has to be place-based? Otherwise, frankly, someone who looks like me makes a fair housing challenge.
Excellent, thank you. It's great to be surrounded by brilliance. Two things I will say, that, not to echo what has been said, Gillian, you certainly nailed so much of what I was going to say. Two things I will say, that Ms. Goodlow said earlier, the ability to help homes or help individuals become homeowners really is tantamount. More than just where, it's what? Because you can't build wealth renting, right? And so helping get individuals into a place where they're owning is, I would say, the number one priority. I will illustrate, though, the second thing that's a concern that we don't necessarily control, but we do need to prioritize and think about. There are, if you've ever been to Dawson Park on a sunny day, you will see the park full of individuals, dominoes, cookouts, hanging out. These people don't live in the neighborhood anymore, they drive in. Why do they drive in? Because of community, because of a sense of belonging, a sense of space, which says to me that wherever they are, it doesn't exist. So prioritizing this, prioritizing it as a value is something for us to begin to strategize, for us to begin to reconsider. How do we help to establish a sense of belonging? And part of that is by the use of our policies, and part of that is also by the use of how we talk about the work that we do. I think that's in our hands. Thanks for your question, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilor Dunphy, any follow-up? You're good.
I am good. Gillian also seems fun, I just want to point that out.
Gillian is very fun. Gillian is very fun. Gillian is very fun.
As they say, a hoot.
You are a hoot. You're a hoot and a half.
Let me add one more thought, because I'm actually meeting with the Cully TIP folks later today. In my role at Verde, I helped start up that TIP district, and we had a lot of discussions around the language in the charter around priority population. And we went back and forth with the lawyers about it because they were like, you can't, you know?
Yeah.
There's all those lawyery things, right? But I'm really intrigued by how you're describing this, especially as it relates to place and how you were able to get support for that. You've mentioned that that also helped you get HUD dollars for it, so let's talk more about that because I'm really interested to see how we could apply that. And my goal of my meeting later is because most of the new TIP districts are in District One, and I've had a lot of my community members come and tell me that they're excited, but they're nervous because, you know, TIP is like, it's the new, it's the formerly URA, right? And that is something that is really, people understand that to be a place, a tool of displacement. And we tried with the new Cully TIP to turn that on its head, but we still have a lot to be seen to make sure that we actually accomplish that. So that's why I'm monitoring it, and I want to make sure that we're applying that with these new districts. So let's continue to talk about that, but I just wanted to note that I was intrigued by the kind of legal maneuvering there that I think would be really beneficial to maybe start exploring into the, putting into the charter. So just flagging that note for you.
And I'm sorry, Counselor, I just, there's one quick point that I wanted to make as we, because, you know, we've been putting these CLCs together. I think one of the, as Helmy just reminded me that I've said multiple times, is that the, these new groups should come to our Oversight Committee and see how it's managed, see what the discussion is, see how meetings are run, see what the priorities are, and so that will help them see what they can do. Because we do a lot, we have a lot of committees in the city, probably way, way, way too many. And this particular committee has stayed together. I mean, we've had people change out over the years, but the core has stayed together. And Dr. Holt, and I know he's not going to toot his own horn, but he's only missed three meetings in 10 years. Three meetings. And when he started this process, Tracy Manning, who was the Bureau Director, told him, oh, it's only going to be three meetings. We just need you for three meetings. And here it is 10 years later, and he's only missed three. And so the leadership of these people from the community that continue to come back and continue to push the city and continue to push our partners, and it's not personal. We know some of them have taken it personally. But our, our goal is to take care of the people who have been displaced, the people who can't find an affordable apartment, people who want to live near their church or their barber shop or near their grandparents or have their kids go to the same school that they went to and not have to drive in. It is of the utmost importance that folks understand what community can do when they're at the table. And that's what we have done with this committee, with this strategy, with these dollars. And, you know, 10 years ago, folks thought we were going to dry up and go away after the $20 million was gone. And we actually had a counselor ask, a commissioner ask us a couple of years ago, aren't you all supposed to be done? And so we're not done. And while I may not be there forever, folks will continue to do this work and ensure that we are continuing to take care of people who need to be taken care of.
Yeah. This committee's leadership and continued commitment to each other and to the community really is inspiring, and I agree that it is a model that we should look towards as we're trying to develop these because that's the other thing, as we know, with committees and community members being on them, is that sometimes electeds can just wait you out or they'll say stuff like, are you done, right? Or we forgot, right? So I'm really grateful that you guys have continued to press and to hold the city accountable, that you guys are not going away. I agree, there's lots more work to be done, but I'm so grateful to all of you for your dedication. Truly is inspiring, and I'm looking forward to continuing this very soon. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take some public testimony, and then if we want to come back and chat a little more, we can, but we'll do that first. Sound good?
I have a testimony, but that's okay.
All right. So Diego, we have five people, yes?
That's correct. I'll read the second item, excuse me. Public hearing on North/North East Neighborhood Housing Strategy. We have five folks signed up. Arlen Smith, Terrence Hayes. Terrence will be joining us online.
My name's Arlen Smith. I've been here a few times before. If Dr. Holt is the fun guy in the room, I'm the opposite. I'm the guy that you call in when you want to scare the shit out of somebody. And sometimes that's necessary. A few warning signs here. A decade or a little more ago, Black Lives Matters came out. The phrase puts people off because it doesn't have the second part to it. It's not Black Lives Matters, it's, damn it, all lives matter. It's getting to the point where no one can afford to live in Portland. Good people can't afford to live in Portland, and Portland cannot afford to have people go away, especially good people, because they can't afford to be here anymore. It's a fundamental wrong. It doesn't matter what color of your skin. It is wrong that people, good families of every race, religious persuasion, can't afford a comfortable home in a good neighborhood. And this city needs to do something about that, needs to take it very seriously. Dr. Holt had mentioned being courageous. I hope that I just was with what I said, because that's going to upset some people. There are many things that can be done that aren't being done because people get tripped up over the language. Councilman mentioned meeting with the attorneys and that they have problems with this wording and that wording. When you run into that type of situation, get ahold of me, and I will give them some new wording because there's always a way to accomplish it. My primary history and training was in hostage negotiation for the Department of Defense and the State Department, and that's all about communication. Attorneys are horrible about communication, but there are things that can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, is it Terrence Hayes next up? Go ahead.
Terrence Hayes, if you can hear us.
I can. Thank you. Thank this committee, Counselor Avalos. Thank y'all for the work y'all are doing in this particular space. I think I always need to remind people that there was a conscious effort into displacing Black folks, and there was a conscious effort into pushing them out into spaces that they didn't normally have a presence. And we have to continue to put just as much conscious effort into restoring that balance as folks once put into, into getting Black folks out of the communities that they lived in. So I just want to remind folks that you got to put the same energy in to restore that that people put into destroying it. So I'd like to just thank the two counselors up here and Jamie Duffy off. So just for the conscious work y'all have done in standing on that principle and not being afraid to say that Black folks was mishandled, displaced, and though we recognize all the city of Portland needs a specific type of help, that the Black community was harmed in a way that other communities were not. So thank y'all for being courageous and not being afraid to say that. Dr. Holt pretty much put it, anything I could say on the table. What I will add is that when me and my wife, who is a fundamental Portlander, North Portland Black woman, was looking for a home, we wanted to move into North and Northeast Portland, and it was unaffordable. And when we were ready to purchase a home, we looked into this program, and one of the things I struggled with is kind of the boundaries that exist when it comes to refinancing your home and taking equity out of your home during certain periods without penalty. So I would love for us to consider that how we build wealth and the generational wealth through homeownership is generally the ability to pull out equity and use that equity to buy homes and start business and do other things. So if we're going to talk about building Black wealth and talk about using a program like this, I want us to consider that if we cannot pull equity out without consequences or without penalty, then we're not actually creating equitable situations when you look at people who take more traditional routes into homeownership. So I just want to make sure we're noting that. And as Dr. Holt said, I do think we need to consider that North and Northeast Portland, though we can recognize the displacement, it is not majority of where Black folks are. And so Counselor Avalos, as you talked about, and Jamie Duffy also, is that it is you guys' district that has a huge presence for our community now. And so I just want to make sure we consider that as you guys have to look into funding and all that, that we're being prepared to have an open dialogue about expanding that and making sure that, especially in District One, that we're getting that opportunity.
Did we lose him?
I think we lost Terrence. I'm not sure if you can still hear us online.
Okay. Thank you, Terrence, for your words. Apologies that there was a technical thing, apparently. Moving on.
We have one more testifier since our two other testifiers ahead testified already. Todd Littlefield, Todd is joining us online.
Go ahead, Todd.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I'll make this quick. I think the, I'm hoping that the counselors will get behind the initiative, support and champion the division of the Homeless and Housing Committee into two separate committees because of the importance of both in Portland. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. And then that concludes testimony. Yes. Well, again, I want to appreciate you all for being here. I think the words that you shared really hit home for us, and I'm going to make sure that that message is delivered to the rest of the council because everyone on our council needs to be held accountable to this work, not just this committee. I am really excited to see how we can grow this partnership, and I really want this committee to be your partner. And as we're adjusting to this new form of government, I know it's tricky and challenging, but I see there's a lot of potential for this committee to really invest some time and energy into this, into your committee, essentially, and growing that work. Do you want to add some final thoughts?
Just wanted to say thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much for everybody being here. Like I mentioned, we're canceling the rest of the agenda due to quorum, so I will end this meeting at 1:32 PM.